Good morning, and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for February 14, 2023. Happy Valentine's Day. Can you all rise if you will to pluck our pledge, if you can? I have an announcement before we begin, in case anybody here for item number 17. Item 17 is going to be pulled off the agenda today and re-brought back in a special meeting, probably next, early part of next week. So, item 17, if you're here for it, will not be here today. It will be pulled off the calendar, the agenda. All right, moving on to staff announcements. I have Judy Hawkins. You have staff announcements.
Good morning and Happy Valentine's Day, Chair Tofanelli, members of the board. I'm here today to let the board members and public know that the county is participating in the Columbia College Community Job Fair tomorrow. We have several departments that will have booths, Human Resources, Public Health, and the Sheriff's Department will all be participating. We also have many members of our community, business members, who will also be there. And so, I did bring for the board copies of the job flyer, and then I also have job flyers to leave out front. And we are looking forward to having a great event tomorrow, and hopefully we will be able to fill some of those really hard-to-fill positions. All right, just to let you know, the Job Fair is Columbia College, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. tomorrow, and they will have a cash-only taco truck there.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Cory?
Good morning, members of the board. Chair Tofanelli, Cory Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. I wanted to give your board and the community an update around our veteran services. The Veteran Services Building was negatively impacted during the recent storms. They have been out of that building since that time. Now, the Veterans Office is running out of the Health and Human Services Agency Building, 509 East St. Charles Street. They are continuing operations. They have not been doing walk-in Thursdays, but that will begin again starting this week, February 16th. Is that the 14th? 16th. So, those walk-ins will continue. I did also want to let you know, we do not yet have a date that that building will be habitable. And we also will be closed to the public on Monday, February 27th, and Friday, March 3rd, as staff will be away at a conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Kathy, do you have an announcement?
Good morning, Chair Tofanelli, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. Today is February 14th, which is a day of love and Valentine's. But what's exciting is the third round of the COVID Small Business Relief Grant that the county has is opening again. I've got several applications in my inbox this morning. So, we're down to about $49,000 left for small businesses. So, if there's any businesses out there that were impacted from COVID, please reach out online on the county website under Economic Development. The second thing I have that's exciting is next week, we're going to be closing our airport from Tuesday through Thursday to begin the studies and surveys that need to be done before we can rehabilitate the runways and the taxiways. So, that's a project that we've been working on for a couple of years and is now coming to fruition. So, the airport will be closed from Tuesday at 7:00 a.m. till Thursday, 5:30 p.m. for survey work. We're getting there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Are there any other staff announcements online?
There are none online.
There are none online. Okay, none in the room? All right, we'll move on to the next item. This is the winter storm updates. This is informational item only. To receive an update presentation from staff on the winter storms, which began on or about December 29, 2022. Mr. Osborne, good morning.
Morning. Morning, Honorable Board members. John Osborne, your Director of Emergency Services. I have an update for you regarding our activities. We continue to operate the Disaster Recovery Center. Our HHSA team continues to lead the fight on that. A big shout-out to those folks that have spent tireless hours down at the fairgrounds in a concrete building that's not very warm. As of yesterday, 110 Calaveras County households have received services. That works out to about 294 residents. A total of 650 services have been provided. Beginning Thursday, there will be a new location for the Disaster Recovery Center. It'll be at 509 East St. Charles Street at the Sequoia Room. The center will be open Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. As of yesterday, there have been 289 enrollments in the FEMA Public Assistance Program, and FEMA has approved $183,539.31 for the Individual Housing Program. That's the program that assists our residents with damage to their dwellings. We've been working extremely hard at getting the word out and getting people to come and receive assistance. Disaster Survivor Assistance Team Five from FEMA has been very, very active throughout the county. They've been to Valley Springs, Burson, Milton, Paloma, McCollum Hill, West Point, Glenco, Mountain Ranch, Copropolis, Angels Camp, Douglas Flat, Murphy's, Arnold, Avery, and Valacito. They continue to work in our community and offer on-the-spot enrollment for FEMA. On the public front, we were included in the Presidential Declaration on February 1st. That declaration gave us public assistance. Under that program, cost share for emergency work costs at 100% for the first 60 days and 75% from day 61 and forward. To date, our latest damage estimate is $3,252,557. That includes the county's response, damage to our own infrastructure, and then damage to public infrastructure such as roads. The permanent work that is included is roads and bridges, water control facilities, buildings and equipment, utilities, parks, recreational facilities, and other items, as well as our emergency response protective majors and debris removal. Make sure I cover all my points. And I welcome any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. John, I had the opportunity to go out to the Recovery Center at Frog Town, and I just want to thank all the staff that was there. It was very impressive from where I was watching, and it was neat to watch everybody, Health and Human Services, Veterans Services, your cell, all your federal and state agency partners cooperating together, as well as assessors sitting there taking claims on the spot. So, I just really want to compliment you on that.
Thank you. I wish I could accept the credit. It's been a collaborative effort. Our HHSA team has been nothing short of amazing in the Recovery Center. Our state and local partners have come and stuck it out with us, and I'm grateful for that.
I want to thank all of them, too. And it's just marvelous to me to see how far we've come in seven years in our disaster response. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of practice.
Yeah, unfortunately.
And Wes Martin, yes?
Yes, I would just like to say thank you very much. I was really impressed with the way everything was set up down at the fairgrounds, and being a client, it was very, very easy to use, and the direction was brilliant. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other?
I just wanted to compliment Cameron on helping me support the CSDs. We've had some outreach from a number of CSDs trying to figure out what the process is, since they're their own special district. And so, thank you for providing that information. And for those CSDs that are not aware, they go through CalOES, and there is a step process for them to make claims for any damages that are within their district.
There will be an applicant's briefing for any public agencies that suffer damage and are looking to participate in the PA program, in the Public Assistance Program, and we will spread that information out once we have that meeting date nailed down.
Thank you.
Ben?
I just want to reflect my colleague's comments on the response and everything, John. When we have an opportunity, can we get a list of the specific roads and infrastructure that have been affected that are in your assessment costs for?
Yes, sir. I thought I've shared that in the past. There's, we have, we being Public Works, has put together 10 projects that will be seeking assistance with, and I can certainly send that out to the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Osborne. And I, too, want to thank you and everybody else that was out there at the fairground and spent some time out there. It was very well set up. It was well done. You started, as you came in the door and went all the way around the room, whatever agency you needed to speak to, and they were all very helpful. They were willing to help any way they can. So, it was a good job, and I thank everybody that was out there and has spent time out there. I know every day going out there, there's been a number of people that show up every day. So, I want to thank everyone that goes out there.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? None? Is there any online?
There are none online.
None online. Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the next item. It's recognition and acknowledgements. The number, first one is a proclamation in the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. It's a proclamation, excuse me, proclaiming the month of February 2023 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County, and I will turn this over to Supervisor Paulendorf.
So, you just read the first part. So, proclamation recognizing February 2023 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Whereas, every year in each of the California 58 counties, 19 ordinary citizens take an oath to volunteer, serve a term of one year as grand jurors. And whereas, the grand jury system was brought to the United States with the Congress, and the first grand jury in America was in 1635. Whereas, Calaveras County, one of the original 27 counties of the state, was organized at the 1849, 1850 session of the California State Legislature. Whereas, the grand jury is truly an independent investigative body, operated separate from the entities and officials they investigate. And grand jurors are the officers of the court under the guidance of Calaveras County's Superior Court Presiding Judge. And whereas, certain responsibilities of the grand jury are mandated by state law, and the grand jury has jurisdictional rights to investigate city and county departments, school districts, and special districts. And whereas, the grand jury is composed of 19 citizens who will represent the citizens of the county in making recommendations for improvement to our local government. And whereas, the grand jury decides what area of local government they are going to investigate or review during the year. One of the most important functions of the grand jury is to review the operations of the officers, department, and agencies of local government and special districts. Whereas, the grand jury receives and reviews complaints from citizens within the county. Whereas, the grand jury investigates processes, may or may not result in reports. Their fact-finding reports identify specific problems and are provided specific recommendations for government improvement and/or identified comment. And whereas, the grand jury is recognized for their dedication and service to their dedicated time volunteering to make Calaveras County Government and special district communities more efficient for the best interest of the community. And with that, is there a motion, or actually, the public comment? Any public comment on this item?
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
And thank you for that proclamation. My name is Carolyn Steymates. I am the California Grand Jury Association Mother Lode President of our chapter. I'd like to have our grand jury stand for recognition and their service to the county currently. We do have a few members here. Thank you for having me. And we also have a chapter member, I see. So, you've heard through the proclamation what we do, what our services are, what we investigate, and so on. For any information, or if you're interested in being a grand juror, or you have something that you want to have investigated, please go to the website, www.grandjury@calaveras.gov.us. And if you want any more information about the Mother Lode chapter, you can go to their website, and that is www.cgja.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Lloyd, and I'm the fourth person of the Calaveras County Grand Jury, and I'm very proud that this Board of Supervisors recognizes the importance of the grand jury. The support that you have given the grand jury in the years that I've been involved with it has been incredible. Every agency that we've worked with has just been there for us, making the time, taking the time to want to take a look at things and see how we can make things better. We are about building, not tearing down, and I'm just really, very excited, and thank you again for this proclamation. It makes me very proud.
We're still on the public comment for the grand jury.
This is the grand jury. This is for the proclam, public comment for the proclamation of the jury. We haven't gotten public comment yet, Will. I'll let you, I'll let you, I'll let you know.
Okay. Any other public comment on the grand jury proclamation? DC, is there anyone online?
There are none online.
Okay. So, with that, is there a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing February 2023 as the Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, move.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, Calaveras County, State of California, does hereby designate the month of February 2023 to be declared the Civil Grand Jury Month in Calaveras County, and to encourage citizen participation in the grand jury process. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the next item. This is a proclamation in the clerk of the Board of Supervisors to proclaim the week of February 12th through February 18th, 2023, as Kindness Week in Calaveras County, and further deem the county as a Random Acts of Kindness Zone. Supervisor Hubbard, you have the proclamation.
And the proclamation, this proclamation recognizes that February 12th through 18th, 2023, as National Random Acts of Kindness Week. Whereas, National Random Acts of Kindness Week will be observed February 12th through the 18th of 2023, and whereas, Calaveras County participated in Random Acts of Kindness Week in 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 22. And whereas, all who live in and work within Calaveras County are encouraged to practice random acts of kindness, a tradition started in Angels Camp by the Jim Burgans family. And now, sorry, is there any public comment? Start reading on. Then should I bring it to the board for a motion?
I move.
I'll second the item.
Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors declare that the county of Calaveras be deemed a Random Act of Kindness Zone during the week of February 17th, and continue from that day through the year 2023.
You have nobody to give it to?
I'll take it myself.
Why don't you do a Random Act of Kindness and pick somebody? Should've gave, should've gave it to the grand jury. All right. Moving on. Will, I think this is, well, you're up here. This is public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda to date may be addressed during the public comment period. The California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is deemed, determined to be in an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Will, you are up.
I'm Will. I'm an alcoholic. Greetings, Honorable Board of Supervisors. I'm a little off here. I'm Will. I'm an alcoholic. I live in Rancho Calaveras in Supervisory District Five. I'm here to thank the board for appointing me to the Hardwood Advisory Committee. My personal interest in the subject of the Hardwoods is the extinction of the blue oaks. I've been concerned about this for quite a number of years. Apparently, I'm the only one. But this isn't a, this isn't a county issue. I realize that. It's a statewide issue, but this whole, this whole forest is under threat. Now, there's a lot of public interest in saving the redwoods, save the sticklecone pines, save the joshua, save the big trees, and so forth. But the blue oaks are so ordinary that they don't get any attention, and they're under threat. We just always take for granted that they're always going to be there. But they're under the threat of extinction. The threat is, the main threats are human development, fire suppression, and cattle. They need fire. And we put out all the fires. So, but there's another more pervasive threat, and that threat is the grass. The grass that's growing on these golden hills and so forth was imported from Spain a couple of centuries ago with Spanish cattle. And it's killing, it's killing these oaks. I've been trying to introduce this idea into academia for years, and nobody's listening to me. I don't, I don't have any academic credentials. But anyhow, being a member of this committee will give me a little credibility with those people. So, I thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Budner. I'll be reading from a prepared statement for precision. I am a full-time resident of Murphy's, an entrepreneurial business owner, and the co-owner of the annual Murphy's Witch Walk. The starkly contrasting views on tourism growth and entrepreneurship expressed by two supervisors at the January 24th Board of Supervisors meeting were headlined by Supervisor Guaramendi's unsuccessful effort to advance this county's urgent requirement to explore additional opportunities for tourism revenue generation and to proactively promote entrepreneurialism. The anti-entrepreneurial climate that Supervisor Guaramendi encountered publicly is directly relevant to what I've consistently experienced for the last several years at great professional, reputational, and financial expense. I call on this board to immediately investigate whether the annual 25% share of transient occupancy tax contributed to the Calaveras Visitors Bureau has surpassed the point of diminishing returns, now requiring the CVB's executive director to publicly present a written continued funding justification plan to this board. The fact pattern reveals that during the last four years, one and a quarter million dollars in public funding has been contributed to the grossly underperforming CVB. The stagnation of Calaveras tourism demands an immediate accounting of the 25% value of this county's scarce TOT funds that cover roughly 80% of the CVB's annual operating expenditures. These public funds would be best reallocated to the nine fire districts, law enforcement, law enforcement, and desperately needed Murphy's Main Street infrastructure improvements. Neighboring Tooluma County by comparison has experienced an increase in tourism and TOT during the same timeframe, enabling the purchase of three Type 1 fire trucks. In Calaveras, each of the nine fire districts receives a scant 2.78% share of annual TOT disbursements compared to the 25% share of disbursements received by the CVB. Maintaining the 25% TOT status quo allocated to the CVB is unjustifiable based upon the agency's legacy of underperformance. Public funding from the transient occupancy tax must be significantly reduced, capped, or eliminated, requiring the CVB to take on significantly more of its annual operating budget through self-funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Seen none in the room, is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay. Seen none, we will close public comment period and move on to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is, items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the Consent Agenda for later discussion. Is there any Board member wish to pull an item? Um, I would like to pull item number six. Is there any staff member which pull an item? Seen none, is there any member of the public wish to pull a consent item?
Yeah. Six, fifteen.
Nine and fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, any other? Not, bring it back to the Board. I'm open for a motion for the remainder of the consent, minus six, nine, and fifteen.
I move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five, zero. I pulled item number six because I did have a conversation with Sarah earlier last week on this item, and my concerns on this item is if we do this, i- in the future at any time, could this just be turned into a special nursing district? Or, um, can they get rid of the hospital itself sometime and just turn this into?
Um, so, they always could have gotten rid of, we can't keep the hospital from going out of business, you know, God forbid, or anything like that. Um, this, what this does is state that a skilled nursing facility is a permissible use on that parcel, um, without the parcel necessarily reverting to the county automatically. Um, so, I mean, yes, it is theoretically possible that the hospital could, that the district could close the hospital, and then a skilled nursing facility would operate on that parcel, as it is now. Um, I think that's, that's the case now also. The hospital could close if it so chose, we can't force them to.
Well, obviously, we can't.
The difference is whether the parcel would automatically, you know, revert to the county in such an instance.
And that's my question, I think, and I'll clarify. If, if Mark Twain Hospital decides to close, they no longer can afford, or it's not beneficial to them to continue, because our lease was with them, would we be able to go out and solicit for any other hospital to come in and take its place versus since the lease was with them and specialized nursing facility could take over? And then we would not have any way to, to put a hospital back in there?
Right, so, yeah, and just to be clear, there's no lease that I'm aware of. It's, the, the county deeded the parcel to the hospital district in the late 1940s. Um, so it's actually, they own, the district owns the, that portion of the parcel. Um, it's just that there was a deed restriction stating that if at any point it ceased to be used as a hospital, the county had the right to take it back. Um, so what this, but there is also, so as, as we all know currently, in addition to the hospital operating on that property, there's also a skilled nursing facility. What this does is, is, you know, state that that, that that is a permissible use, and that the county doesn't regain the right to take it back simply because there's a skilled nursing facility there.
All right, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
There any other questions? Martin, you have light line?
No, sir.
Are there any public questions or comments in this item? Okay, I'll bring it, any online?
Yes, actually, Dr. Randy Smart, he's online.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, good morning, everybody. Randy Smart, the CEO of the North Point Healthcare District. Uh, we've looked at this issue, and we don't have any objections to making the change you're contemplating today. I, I understand the Chair's concern about the deed, and it's, it's a legitimate concern. I can tell you that the, the number one thing the district is committed to is keeping a hospital in this county for a long, long time. Um, so, uh, although that could change, uh, we are going to do everything we can to make sure that doesn't happen for the foreseeable future. But, um, in consideration of this particular, um, uh, deed change, we don't have any objections to that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Smart. Supervisor Stopper, you got a question, comment?
Just a motion if you're willing.
I'm open for a motion.
So moved.
Duck it.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Follendorf, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, zero. We will move on to item number nine. This is an action item, and clerk of Board of Supervisors revise the Board of Supervisor's assignment to the local area formation commission, LAFCO. Al, you pulled this item?
I'd like to give a little clarification as to, uh...
Al, I've been on LAFCO for the last six years, and prior I was on it for four. And I'm pulling back off of it to be the alternate. Amanda was the alternate for it, she's going to take my place as the permanent member, and I will stay on LAFCO as an alternate. Neither her or Jack have, can't make a meeting, I will attend the meeting for them. That's basically what it is.
You're well served.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments? Any online?
There are no online public comments.
I'll bring it back for a motion.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, zero. Al, you pulled item number 15. This is agreement with Human Services. This has authorized the Board Chair to sign an agreement with Jump Technology Services LLC for adult protective services for Public Guardian Software in the amount of $72,056.50 for three years for a period of February 1st, 2023, through January 31st, 2026. Al, you got questions on this item?
Just a simple que, uh, question. How does, um, Jump Technology Services, uh, serve the adult protective services? And, uh, the Public Guardian software? I'm not sure exactly what, what that is.
Okay, I think Cory is here, and she can give you an explanation.
Thank you. That's an excellent question. Cory Allen, Health and Human Services. Leaps is a database that tracks information that serves families and adults who are served either through Adult Protective Services or through Public Guardian. Public Guardian, uh, pays a small percentage of that full contract, split between the probate public guardianship cases and the, uh, LPS public guardianship cases. What it does is it provides accountings, it provides case management journaling, uh, and just basic information so that the social worker can maintain and track information over time and best serve your constituents. You're welcome.
That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Is there any other public comments, questions? Seen none? Online?
There are none online.
I'll bring it back to the Board for a motion.
I move.
A motion by Supervisor Follendorf.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, zero. Um, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we come back for the regular agenda item. In five minutes. We're good to go.
Good.
All right, back to the regular agenda. Item number 16, this is an informational item, Health and Human Services Agency. Research, receive an informational update regarding the conclusion of federal continuous coverage for persons receiving Medi-Cal and conclusion of CalFresh emergency allotments. This is Cory Allen.
Thank you so much, Chair, members of the Board, Cory Allen, again, Health and Human Services. Today, however, I wanted to be able to introduce you to the team that is conducting this very critical work on behalf of your constituents. This is a major lift, both internally to the department and, most importantly, to the consumers of the services. So with no further ado, Program Manager Robin Carter and two of her team.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Thank you. Um, I'd like, Robin Carter, Program Manager, Health and Human Services. Um, this is Jennifer Pruden, she's my supervisor of CalFresh. And this is Susan Stockberger, who is, she's a system support tech, but she is a guru of Medi-Cal. So they're here to back me up because I know I'm going to forget some things. So, um, two major programs within our agency and programs that we administer, um, are going to be affected. Um, back March of 2020, when the pandemic hit, there was, um, an order that was set in place that Medi-Cal would continue for beneficiaries without a break unless they chose to discontinue their Medi-Cal coverage. That is coming to an end. Um, what happens with this ending is that we will have to go back to doing annual renewals of our beneficiaries that are relieving Medi, that are receiving Medi-Cal. That could affect them either by having a share of cost that they haven't had this whole entire time because we weren't doing renewals, or it could affect them actually being discontinued from Medi-Cal benefits. So we've been preparing our beneficiaries for this, we have talking points, um, we have flyers out there. The talking points are when we are on the phone speaking to our beneficiaries of Medi-Cal, we let them know this is coming to an end, and this is what you are going to, um, be expecting. Um, make sure you get your, uh, change of address into us, your phone number is up to date because we will be reaching out to you. Then there is the, uh, CalFresh, um, emergency allotment that our recipients have been receiving. That emergency allotment could have been anywhere from $95 up to maybe $800, depending on how many individuals were living in that home. These emergency allotments are always, also going to be impacted and are going to be discontinuing. The emergency allotments were assistance to our CalFresh families to help with when COVID was in place with the children not going to school, to also help with the high prices of food across, across the board. So, um, I am going to let Jen speak first regarding the impacts of CalFresh.
Good morning, Board. Jennifer Pruden, Calaveras Health and Human Services Eligibility Supervisor. Uh, thank you for having us today. Um, this is a big change that we knew was coming. We've been prepared for it, we've been working really hard to prepare not only our community members, um, but preparing and staff too. So some of you ask, what is CalFresh? Some people know it as SNAP or as EBT. Um, this is an income-driven program, and when we say low income, we're talking income eligible, right? We're talking working households who this has helped keep food on the table during the pandemic for them. We're talking families who may not have been able to have the option to shop locally, who could do it during the pandemic because they had that little bit of extra CalFresh benefits. So this is not only a huge impact to the families, but a huge impact to our communities. Dollars being spent locally instead of being forced to shop out of county where they could afford to stretch their dollars, right? So we have families, currently, we have 3,399 CalFresh active cases in our county. That is a total of 5,774 participants. That's 5,774 people that will be affected by this emergency allotments coming to an end. This will be benefits. Our largest population that it is going to affect is going to be our elderly population that are on fixed incomes, who monthly are eligible to $23 a month in CalFresh benefits, have been getting a $263 emergency allotment bump every month. This is a huge impact to them the most. So what does that mean for us as workers and as staff? It means we're going to have clients calling, they're going to want hearings, they're going to be upset. We are already experiencing it, we're already trying to explain to them. This was coming to an end. February was the last month that they are eligible, which means March, they do them back month payments, and March will be their last, uh, supplement issuance they get. So it's coming very, very quickly, people are already starting to have to adjust their budgets. What do we have left in CalFresh? We know we're getting one more allotment, how can we get this to stretch? Kids are back in school, all these things are happening, there's a lot of changes. Oh, there's going to be changes to my Medi-Cal coming also. Will I be eligible? Am I going to have to now stretch my money to pay for health insurance? So there's a lot of factors going into this on top of staffing. Now, clients, we're going to need to make sure that their cases are all running absolutely perfect for what they're getting, so that they're getting an actual perfect allotment for what their household composition is. Um, there's, uh, really our community, when you think about our grocery stores, right? We think about $500,000 a month of emergency allotments only are being issued. I did bring, if Stacy could share with the Board, um, this is the data of exactly how much is issued every month for CalFresh-only emergency allotments. It's over $500,000 every month. Talking half a million dollars into our local economy, even if it's 30 or 60%, it's a huge increase. I mean, we're talking local grocery stores, farmers markets. Um, being able to keep that money in the community is huge. People are going to have to make choices, they're going to have to decide how to stretch that CalFresh money that they have and their food budget, and it may mean they have to shop out of county, so the impact is going to be large um, to our grocers and, and to our, our vendors that we have locally. Any questions for me before I turn it over for Medi-Cal? No? Okay.
Is there any questions? Okay.
Good morning, Honorable Board. Um, my name is Susan Stockberger, I am Assistant Support Tech with Calaveras Health and Human Services. I'm here today to bring you up to date about the Medi-Cal continuous coverage ending and the implications, um, it will have on our Health and Human Service Agency and our strategies to adjust to this policy change. Back in March of 2020, um, the Department of Healthcare Services issued policy guidance that ensured all Medi-Cal beneficiaries will provided continuous coverage, and during this time, this policy was linked to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And, um, this meant that once this was lifted, that policy would also be lifted too. Moving forward, December 29th, 2022, Congress passed the Consolidated Appropriations Act, which is referred to as the Omnibus Spending Bill, which, as a funding package, enacted provisions which included separating Medi-Cal continuous coverage requirement from the federal COVID-19 public health emergency, and March 31st, 2023 marks the end of this requirement set in place on March 2020. Beginning April 1st, 2023, all California counties will resume normal Medi-Cal redetermination activities over the next 14 months. That's 53124. Many of the program flexibilities and enhancements adopted during the public health emergency are going to remain in place. Um, that will require policy updates, procedure updates, we're working on those now, staff trainings, we have two scheduled for March, training for our certified enrollment counselors for Covered California. Um, we are considered certified enrollment counselors, but for the past three years, we haven't processed, uh, Medi-Cal redetermination or enrolled a family onto a Covered California plan. So all staff will need, um, refresher training in this area. Prior to the public health emergency, we had a natural ebb and flow to our workflow process. Um, Medi-Cal caseloads were lower due to the annual redetermination processing, which was put on hold in March of 2020. which was put on hold in March of 2020. During the pandemic, all Medi-Cal cases were essentially put on hold. Beneficiaries were not being discontinued and not subject to eligibility review. The only time they were discontinued is if they moved out of state, they were deceased, or if they requested it. Caseloads grew immensely because of no discontinuance allowed. And upon Medi-Cal approval, these applicants were still protected against being discontinued, even if they were ineligible during that time. We currently have 7,606 active Medi-Cal cases with 13,360 active beneficiaries. The Medi-Cal redetermination process begins with an automatic renewal. Financial data is compared to the federal data hub. And if it's reasonably compatible, the Medi-Cal will automatically renew. The issue is the average auto renewal rate, renewal rate dropped 16% from 41% to 25%, mostly due to unreported changes in circumstances. The remaining 75% of the redeterminations of Medi-Cal will need, will require us to manually process them. Based on the current figures, we have 5,705 Medi-Cal redeterminations to process before May 31 of 2024. We have 11 eligibility specialists to process those. Training will be needed, and we're working on that. Forty, that averages about 40 redeterminations a month for the next 14 months. It takes about three to four hours or more per redetermination to process, which is about 120 to 160 hours or more per person, per month, just to process the Medi-Cal redeterminations. And that doesn't include any of their other duties. So we are anticipating a bit of overtime during this next year or so. As negative actions are taken, it's expected there will be an influx of incoming calls, clients coming to the office who are unknowingly discontinued due to loss of contact. We have developed a phone script that we have on our message machine. So if they do call, we are asking them to confirm and update their contact information. We anticipate the need for excessive phone discussions to discuss explaining the Medi-Cal changes that are happening. Cases that are discontinued due to financial ineligibility, if eligible, will be offered a plan through Covered California. If they have a premium to pay, they will be automatically put on a plan by Covered California and billed for the first month premium. If they fail to pay that, they will be discontinued. And we are anticipating we're going to get phone calls about that and possibly reapplications. If they have no premium, the clients must accept the terms of advanced premium tax credits. So they either need to call Covered California and accept the terms or go online and do this. They have 30 days. If they don't do this, they will be discontinued. And we expect them to be calling our office and reapplying as well. Many of them will be transitioning from no share of cost Medi-Cal to a share of cost Medi-Cal. And some will even be determined to be completely ineligible. So which in turn, we think will lead to an upswing in state hearings, requesting an additional cost to process. And those take about eight to 10 hours each just to gather all the information for the hearing. So due to all these regulation changes, the amount of time and efforts needed to update our policies, our procedures, retrain all of our staff, including our seasoned staff, we are requesting your continued support through this challenging transition. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
So what I'm hearing is, you know, just to simplify it, because you had a lot of technical information in there. First, I have a question on that premium, when that first month cost that you said. What does that cost look like to a family that's reapplying for Medi-Cal or going through the process for Medi-Cal right now? That first month cost that they have to pay or they're dropped, right?
Right. It depends, actually, on several factors. If what they're applying is usually based on income.
Right.
Okay, so it would determine as to how much the premium would be based on that income. It could be higher or lower. Some have none because of the tax credits.
Yeah, I can understand that part. But is there like a max cost that you've seen that could cost a family?
It can cost up to $1,000.
For the first month, a lot of people that are stretched thin, that have to go through this process, just be able to get health coverage. Okay. So what I'm hearing is the state's restructuring everything for Medi-Cal, you know, so they're making everyone go through this process. It's adding a lot more to your work, and you're actually stretched thin. And at the same time, the state is not passing on as many dollars. And so now you're trying to figure out how we're going to be able to process this with the new rules and less money.
And we have a lot of new employees to train.
Right, I hear that. Just want to conceptualize what they're saying.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you all very much for the work that you guys do. You deal every day with some of our most vulnerable populations. And I see you in the community, and I appreciate it. So if I understand this correctly, this is the way it was in February 2020. Then we had this big change. And now we're going back to the way it was. And we got to do all this catch-up work because we got a short runway on this. So, you know, it's hard to think of this as like an entitlement. But in many ways, after this much time, people do. And I think that's natural. We have the, you know, in a country like ours, people shouldn't go hungry. We are the wealthiest country and most powerful in the world. We can feed our people if we decide to. Will this have impacts on things like the Resource Connection, the Food Bank programs that you offer up in my district?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So I've actually reached out as soon as we knew this was coming, but as soon as we actually had official word from the state on the end date, I have posted flyers, frequently asked questions at all of our community-based organizations, the Food Bank, Sierra Hope, ATCA, all of our community partners, so that they could also, since we're reaching the same clientele, be able, if you have questions, please reach out to the county. Flyers are up in our outstations so that they have them. The Resource Connection is a huge partner with us so that we can get out, you know, pantry days, commodity days, things like that. Absolutely.
Right. And I know those are different than the EBT card. And there are different pots. But it's all on the same table at the end of the day.
Absolutely. And spending on groceries in February of 2020 is very different than spending groceries in February of 2023.
Yes, yes, it's gone up considerably.
Yes.
We've also reached out to our faith-based organizations that have suppers and that type of thing to let them know the impacts are probably going to be a lot bigger for coming their way also.
Okay, well, this is, I don't speak for the Board, but this is really important to me personally. So if there are things going on, you just don't. I know Nancy does a great job. There's so many fingers out in the community making sure that we feed people. That's really important. And then the staffing, I'm sure you guys will struggle through that. But are there other things that this Board that we can do for you guys? I mean, this is a major transition. And this economic impact, as you pointed out, Robin, is going to have major impacts on our local grocery stores. You know, we're around Flat Market, going up the hill, West Point, down in Mokil and other places in Senders. This will have a big impact on them. Are there things that we can do as a Board to help you guys this transition?
Support us and give us forgiveness for the amount of hours that we're going to put in because it's going to be a big pool. Like both Susan and Jen said, is that three-quarters of my eligibility staff have been in our office less than two years. They have never done a renewal. And this is a really big lift. A renewal is pretty much like a brand-new intake. And they take a lot of time. And a lot of information needs to be provided to make sure the household is eligible or what their status ends up being. So the training, yeah, we're getting that all in place. I have an amazing team to back me up here. And all of my new staff is willing to learn. And we're just, just forgiveness for us, definitely.
So you're giving us the warning that we're going to get a lot of phone calls? Is that all it is? And Craig's going to squeeze us home the button?
And it's going to be, and it's going to be our community, too, because our community is more than likely going to reach out to you all and say, do you have, can you help assist with this? And why is this happening? And we have done a lot with posting out there to our community to let them know the changes and then where they can reach out to if they need further assistance and guidance.
Thank you for that question also. As a Director of the Agency, I think it's important that you also hear how important it is that we recognize, when we hear 11 workers, it really puts a quantity on and a cap on just how much capacity we have. So I want to acknowledge that this group of supervisors, managers, managers and analysts will be absorbing quite a bit of that workload as well, not only in the quality control that they do, but they will be lifting cases, I would imagine. Look at them nodding. And they are absolutely spectacular and experts at this. So I just wanted to make sure I acknowledge the hard work that they have been doing to prepare and what they will be doing in the future. We are funded by federal and state dollars. This is not a lift that your Board will need to worry about financially. We will receive a small allotment. Ms. Carter is choosing between whether or not she'll accept that money in the third quarter or fourth quarter of this year or if we'll let it roll into next year because we want to make sure that the funding for staff hits when the workload hits at the greatest level. So right now, we are prepared for this. And I just want to say thank you so much. Any other questions?
I'll just clip this, thanking you guys just one more time. I mean, really, the work you do is valuable.
I have a question. Part of the outreach, are we, are you also going through the schools? Because there's a lot of parent bulletin that gets sent out to the parents from the schools or even the county officer bed.
You know what? That's a really good thought. We do have it on our Facebook page. We do have it on the county website. That is a real good thought to get it into our schools. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that.
There's PEBT, too, to supplement, which is also winding down someone now that the kids are back in school. I sit on the PEBT Board for the state. So even though they have, that's also going to be another impact to them, is the PEBT per CalFresh that they've been receiving. It is slowing down. It will still continue, but at a much smaller amount than it was previously.
Thank you.
The State Board for that?
I sit on the Board for PEBT as the subject matter expert, yeah, for the county.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's my honor.
I have a couple of questions. It goes to the Medi-Cal part of it. You're saying it's now going to go back to annually renewing?
Correct.
So this isn't going to end for you. Once you get caught up, you got to continue annually. And so my question is, how does that work? Medicare, there's a date, like October to December, where you can do whatever, whatever. Is it from their start date? One year from their start date? So you're going to go through the whole year because we're not allowing it at one time. So it's going to be an ongoing thing after this that you didn't have to do for the last two or three years.
Correct.
Yeah, just more added work to it.
Yes.
Well, thank you guys very much for all the work you do. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
There any public questions, comments? None? Is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, well, this was an informational item. So we don't require any motion or anything. But we want to thank you. And again, come before the Board, or Cory, come and talk to us if you need anything to help you to do this massive amount of work that you have. Looking forward to you. And then annually, keep it going. It's just not going to, okay, we're done. No, it's got to keep going. So, all right, thank you. All right, item 17 has been pulled. So we will go to supervisor announcements. We will start with Supervisor Stopper. You see that look?
If you're not ready, we can. I have a CSCDD meeting later this week. I had a Motherlode Job Training Agency meeting a few weeks ago. I was appointed chair to that Board. We have hardwood oak advisory committee meeting coming up. I mean, it's a month.
It's a month.
We're back in gear.
Here we are. Supervisor Ballendorf.
I just have a public announcement for those of you that are listening. So next week, there are two open houses. One right here in San Andreas at the Town Hall. And then the second one is at the Burt High School multi-purpose. So the first meeting is on the 22nd from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the second open house is on the 23rd of February from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. What is it? It is the Calaveras County Evacuation Need and Assessment and Prepariness Plan. So we are seeking out from the Council of Government with collaboration with the city and county to get your input on evacuations across the county. If you're not able to make the inputting, there is an online public comment. And the website is www.calaverasready.com. That's all I have.
Supervisor Garimendi.
Barely keep track of what's going on. Nothing I'm required to report to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Everdine?
Yes, I attended the Agency on Aging meeting as well as the Central Sierra Child Support Agency, Calaveras Big Trees Association, and the Evans Past Property Owners meeting as well.
All right. And I did not attend anything I need to report out, but I will report out. And this will not cost the county anything. It's not really county-related. But Saturday, February 18th, is my 51st wedding anniversary. So it's going to cost me. And those 51 are all in a row. So there is no in-between.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And do we have any staff reports? No? Stacy? Susan?